...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Kristia.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parsons?
Present.
Mayor Lumber?
Here.
First order is to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion and second to approve the agenda is presented. Any changes or discussion on the part of the council administration? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from July 11th, 15th, and 31st, three meetings. If I could have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. Any changes or thing on behalf of the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We need a motion for the approval of the bills and claims submitted with the agenda tonight.
So moved. Second?
Motion and second. Any questions on the listing of bills and claims that were presented? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the bills and claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have four items on the consent calendar, plats of different properties. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve the items on the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public input. Anybody wishing to address their counsel may do so at this time? This is Marso.
Lisa Marso, 1325 Parkview Place. Just wanted to update the council and the city on the safety program for kids. I was up here at the last meeting and the chief had given support for the program. The council had given support for the program. Since then, we actually have the program up and running. Just wanted to publicly thank American Family, Josh Coob, Bill Thompson State Farm, Bone Associates, Clark Insurance, Financial Insurance, both Casey and Gary Sanu, and McKinney Olson Insurance, who gave money to fund the ice cream cone program. B&amp;G, who are discounting the ice cream cones for the kids. Performance Press, who donated the time to create the coupons, and the actual coupons were printed. The police officers have given over 50 coupons to children in the community for exercising good safety, whether it be using a helmet, using crosswalks, or anything else that they, the police officers believe are worthy of recognizing children in the community for safe practices. There was great coverage in both the Journal and the Challenger on the program, and I just wanted to update the council and thank those people publicly. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Walsh.
Good evening. My name's Tom Walsh. I used to have Burger King in the area. About five and a half years ago, I started Great Life Golf Fitness.
Tom, can you turn the mic?
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. About five and a half years ago, I started Great Life. Our mission at Great Life is to enrich lives of families and individuals through golf, fitness, and healthy lifestyle. My whole background's been working with kids and families and that, and if things didn't change, this world's going to get a little messed up. So, we've got over 40,000 members in Sioux Falls. We've got seven golf courses that we own or manage. We've got a dozen fitness centers. We just opened one, 10,000 square foot over on 40th and Saratoma. We've got a 16,000 square foot one we're remodeling in Harrisburg. And as of first January, we took over the city courses down, or the city course down there in Yankton at Fox Run. Since we started, every golf course that we've been involved in, we've leased, well, I shouldn't say Hartford and Del Rapids, Worthington. We've doubled the rounds within three years and doubled the revenues. Baker Crossing and Will Run, we've done, we do over 40,000 rounds a year. We built new clubhouse at Will Run and Hartford, completely remodeled Worthington, what's, Baker Crossing, and Del Rapids. So, but every course we've been involved in, we've kept all the people. We've really focused, we do family clinics on Sundays, free clinics for kids on Tuesday, free clinics for adults on Monday or Tuesday night. About five and a half years ago, I was here and asked maybe for you to consider looking at Great Life managing your courses. I think you've got a good team. I think Kelly Eiler's outstanding. I think Zane has gotten better every year. It's, I know you've, I think I saw you put about 270,000 into the golf course last year, and possibly if you want to take a look at having us get involved, I think we can significantly slow the bleeding, if not turn it around. In the courses that we don't own, Del Rapids and Baker Crossing, excuse me, Yankton, we have entered into agreements where we do a participation agreement for capital improvement, capital expenses. And I've got some brochures with my card on here. And then also Amy Leon and Todd Larson are the two key city people down in Yankton, that if you want to call them and get any information, I'd be happy to. If, one of the things that, when we were looking at it five years ago, we were thinking maybe take part of the banquet room and make it into a fitness center, and that'd still be one of the things that we'd consider. We're really a lifestyle. We're more than just golf or fitness. Oh, and then we've got a bowling center, and we've got a bunch of stuff as far as activities, 50% off at the zoo, the Sky Zone, Canaries, Butterfly House. And the whole idea is getting families, couples out, having fun, building relationships, and making a difference in people's lives, especially the lives of children. So, any questions? I don't think so. We, go ahead.
Tom, any idea how many of your members live in Brandon?
No, I don't. We'd make a lot more of them.
Okay, I have a question. Is something, I know in Harrisburg, you were saying that you're doing like a, kind of like a community, like wellness center?
Yes.
Is that something that would ever be a possibility, that you could, you would invest in Brandon?
Well-
Doing some kind of rec center along with the golf course?
We've been looking at Brandon for over five years, and it is, man, we have a relationship with the little par three course down there that we ran for one year, but Brandon's a natural. It's a family-oriented area, and you guys, like, just like any other municipality, have challenges with streets and sewer and water. That, maybe that might be a better fit for some of your revenue. But if we can help, we'd be happy to. Otherwise, wish you best.
So, Tom, the pushback we get on it is, at least I've gotten on it, is that if we have Great Life come in, we're going to have an influx of golfers. And so, for the folks that have lived here a long time, and, you know, and have supported it all these years, and want to continue to support it, they're feeling that they're going to get pushed out. Have you run into that before?
No. No. The only, we've got about 15, 20 courses that are what we call affiliate, where our members get free green fees. And the only one that has not renewed was Canton, and that's because the members had to make tee times. Kelly can tell you about that. But every course, we've, we're pretty good. We put GPS on all our courses, and we have Bluetooth, and we do the water and the coolers, and some of you have played our courses and that. And then we've got computer systems hooked up so that if Will Run isn't available, we'll check to the other courses that we have to see that you can get on it. Okay? Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. I mean, if there's a possibility of the amenity staying, the great amenity that it is, and adding to it, and taking some of that drain off the taxpayers, I guess I feel like it's worth the conversation to revisit it if it's been five years.
Sure.
So, I don't know what the next steps would be.
Yeah, no, no. If, if there's something we can do to help, if you want to have a conversation, Brian's got, he's been, we've had conversation before. You can talk to any of the ownership groups before we got involved with them, and what we've done as far as like, a number of them set up that it has to stay an 18-hole golf course. I've got to make some commitment to capital improvements, different things like that. But the whole thing is you create a win-win, and hopefully you have fun with it. Okay?
One more question. So you said Yankton still owns their golf course?
Yes.
And you basically go in and manage it?
We lease it.
Okay, so you lease it out, so, okay.
And we do management or whatever.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
We got the LPG's Magic Tour coming up at the end of the month. You guys, on behalf of sending your tickets, if it isn't a conflict. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
As was mentioned, we're continually looking at, at things there, and always looking at the budget line items. And in fact, just a couple days ago, we had the same conversation about your organization and stuff. So, as we're going through the process, if we have the desire, we'll be in contact with you. Anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Moving on, we have a public hearing for two items, rezoning of the 300 South Split Rock Boulevard from, into that new industrial-
General, from general business to institutional.
Institutional.
Yep. This is the property that contains the high, or the school administration building and the old Dairy Queen property. They've been consolidated into one.
Second?
Motion and second to approve, first reading of ordinance 593. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a public hearing for the retail malt beverage and South Dakota wine license for Dakota Star Casino at 1320 East Cedar Street. Anybody present that wants to address or concerns?
Planning and zoning commission granted the conditional use permit on, last Thursday.
Okay. Concerns from the council, public?
I move to approve. Second?
Motion and second to approve the retail malt beverage and wine license for Dakota Star Casino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have a list of volunteers that helped clean up the golf course after the storm that we had a few weeks ago. I'd just like to publicly recognize those names, and we as a council will need to approve these people as volunteers that have come in and helped. So, if a couple years down the road their backs get blown out or whatever, we can pay for their work comp issues. But I did want to publicly recognize these people. Luther Hagland, Mitch and Lisa Looning, Dan Mostek, Tim Scholes, Joe Fleer, Flyer, Dave and Karen Peak, Paul Chabot, 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 and Brian Chabot. Thank you very much for those people for volunteering and helping clean up after the storm. A lot of tree damage and stuff occurred, so it all, it all helps in, helps out. If I can have a motion to approve those volunteers?
So moved. Second?
Motion and second to approve the list of volunteers that were used to help clean up the golf course. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a report from ISG on the Aspen Park Plan, Master Plan.
Thanks, everyone. The report's in the, on the server. It was a little bit big to join into the packet, so it's a separate, separate item on here.
You're live.
All right. I just wanted to give her a phone- Good evening. My name is Amanda Prosser. I am a landscape architect with ISG. I also have a couple of my coworkers here with me tonight. Josh Muckenhern, he is an architect with ISG, and Rachel Baker, a landscape designer with ISG. So, we have been working with the city since early May on coming up with a long-term vision and master plan for Aspen Park. A lot of your faces look familiar, so I hope that you have had a chance to participate in some of the, you know, concept review meetings and input sessions that we've held throughout the past few months. And so, really, tonight here, I'm just, I'm here to update you on where we've been, what we've learned, and where we're at with the master plan to date, and go over the plan. I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, so I'm going to try and get through this in about 15 minutes. But please stop me if there's any questions. So what we've pulled together and what the final deliverable will be a full report of, of all the information that we've gathered to date, all of the, the concept design plans that we've, that we've vetted through a public process, and then the final master plan, and then recommendations, including phasing and funding, which we'll hopefully refine here over the next month or so. And I think the plan is to come back to you folks sometime in September with that final document. So, as part of some of the master planning goals, really, it was to assess and take an inventory of everything that's out there in Aspen Park today. Look at the condition, you know, understand how it's used, and come up with some recommendations for improvements to those existing structures. We also wanted to gather input from a broad range of users. So, one of the first things that we did was pull together an online survey, and then a hard copy of those surveys, and locate those throughout the community. We had a good response to those. We had almost over 400 responses in total between the online and the hard copy. But we also met with a series of user groups. So, it was everything from the softball, baseball, soccer, flag football, school district, and so on. There was, I think, 12 different user groups that we met with in early June to understand how they use the facility, and what their needs were today and in the future as well. And so, you know, some of the, the consistent things that we heard through the, the general public, and then also those user groups, is that what's out there today, and this was our observation as well, is that what's out there today is in, in pretty good condition. Especially the, the baseball, softball fields are well-maintained, well taken care of, and that it was important for all of those groups to keep what's existing and improve as necessary, but also add additional facilities. Every, every group that we talked to is experiencing growth, and only sees that continuing in the future. The other encouraging piece that we heard from those user groups is that almost, well, I should say, everybody was willing to share facilities. So that included, you know, baseball, softball, flag football, would all be willing to share those fields, which, you know, you don't see in every community. So that was really encouraging, because even though it is a 90-plus acre piece of land, once you start adding three softball fields, and four baseball fields, and some soccer fields, and a hockey arena, and organized parking, some playgrounds, it gets taken up very quickly. And so, as part of the exercises that we went with, or went through in developing the concepts, is trying to balance out all of those needs. You know, what is the appropriate amount of fields? How can we accommodate all of these different user groups, and, and still find a nice balance of space in, in introducing, you know, new groups to the park as well? Part of, another thing I wanted to touch on is that some of the public engagement survey results, it wasn't surprising that the two primary reasons that people visited the park were for the swimming pool and the baseball and softball fields. You know, aside from that, there's, there appears to be very little that attracts folks to the park. And so, a lot of the responses were to add in items to support additional uses or different types of uses. So, some of the things that were mentioned were just improving accessibility to all of the existing facilities, but also adding trail connections, picnicking, playgrounds, additional fields and courts, improving, you know, the courts and soccer fields that are out there, adding additional bathrooms. What else here? Adding in lawn games, you know, so, so elements and, and types of activities that draw on a wide variety of age groups was important. You know, and the, I would say the number one comment that we heard back from the public and all of the user groups is to make sure that as the park continues to get built out, that an additional or second entrance is added. So, all of the concepts in the current master plan show a secondary access point into the park along the southern end. There's a couple different ways that, that you could take that roadway connection, but that is included. And they also said to make sure that the circulation for the parking was organized. So, that was, that was a top priority, making sure that that was addressed in all of the plans. Another interesting statistic here is that, you know, we asked, how satisfied are you with the park's trails, the facilities, the outdoor rec opportunities, and the program offerings? And it was pretty much split. You know, I, I think about a third of the folks were, were satisfied, a third were unsatisfied, and a third, you know, said not applicable. So, the takeaway that, that we got from that is that there's room for improvement. But an encouraging piece of this is that the next question was, you know, do you feel that Aspen Park is, is a significant or not significant aspect of this community? And a resounding 92% said it was a significant piece of this community, and, and it's highly valued. So, it definitely has support, you know, for, for the improvements that are being proposed. So I don't know if you, if you folks are following along here through the pages. But, you know, the next, the next couple, you know, we took a look at just the overall setting and local context of where Aspen Park fits within the community, and took a look at, you know, how would you access, access it not only from the roadway system, but also from a trail system? And, and taking an inventory of what else you have within the community from a recreation standpoint, to make sure that we're not duplicating any features that are found elsewhere, but also understanding where the gaps may be. The next page, again, looks at all of the existing conditions. I, I touched on that at the beginning there. And then the next piece touches on, you know, what the top improvements are that, that we found out through the public input period, and then also the top new amenities. You know, one other item that stood out here was some type of outdoor amphitheater or performance space. So, nothing too large, but, you know, if there was space for some, for a small concert, or small stage for dance performances, it was noted that there was an interest in that type of facility. There is also generally support for reforested portions of the park, and naturalizing kind of the perimeters, and then also expanding the stormwater management system as well. So, hopefully by adding that type of planting and landscape, it would reduce mowing and some maintenance. And then, the next few pages take a look at a variety of different buildings and shade structures. And this would, these pages would be consistent across all plans. So, there are a variety of different buildings and structures found within the park today. And so, trying to find a way to come up with kind of this cohesive palette, both in materials and colors and styles, that we could carry that through all building structures found within the park. So you're really kind of, you know, confirming or setting this brand for the park itself. So, within the ball field complex and softball, baseball complex, you know, we would try and pull off some of the materials found within the new grandstand that's out there. And then perhaps some of that CMU block style could be carried through to other structures. One of the other comments that was brought up in the public open house about a month ago is the concern about, you know, if there is a hockey arena brought into the park at some point, you know, that has a warm and inviting feel to it. So, if there, if there is kind of a common space towards the entrance, you know, making sure that we're careful about what materials are selected there. So, ensuring that there's, you know, perhaps floor-to-ceiling windows so that you can see into that space. The, the lighting is inviting as well was, was important, so that it just doesn't seem like a metal building, which a lot of hockey arenas do. So, that was noted, and it is included there on, I believe it's the next slide. So, and then there's just some precedent imagery of how you could address that to add some of those elements for that inviting kind of front-entry look. So, as part of our, our process here, we developed three different concept plans, shared these with the public the end of June. And where we ended up was kind of a combination of, what would I, concept one and concept two. And so then, just probably two, three weeks ago, is the end of July, July 22nd, we presented a preliminary master plan, again, kind of in an open house fashion, and also to, we also gave an update to the Parks Advisory Commission, and kind of ran through the plan. And generally, everyone, you know, was supportive of the improvements. There was only just a couple minor tweaks that we have changed since that July 22nd meeting. And so, if we want to bring up the updated master plan, I can run through the plan. All right. So, so the number one priority, as I noted before, was parking and circulation improvement. So, as you can see, we are maintaining the access point on the northern end of the park, and we are shifting that roadway slightly to the west to allow for a trail to go along the northeast side of that roadway coming in. So, as you're coming in from Aspen Boulevard, you, as a cyclist, you wouldn't have to cross over the road to the south to get into the park. So, trying to minimize conflict right there from the entrance point. So, that, that roadway system continues south, and as you can see, all the way in the southwest corner, you could loop that road back, so it, it aligns with Ironwood Drive. Or as the development to the south gets developed, you could have a connection there as well. So, brand new roadway paved, making its way through the entire park, has kind of a curvilinear design intentionally, so to slow traffic. On the northern end there, we are maintaining the existing tennis courts, which I believe are being restripped for pickleball, or they have been? Yes? Okay. So that happened this summer. We also included a parking lot just the north of the existing poolhouse building. So, there's no longer really any conflict between people entering the park, driving in, and kids getting out of vehicles or being dropped off to, to get into the pool there. We are showing the footprint of the pool deck itself to be expanded a bit. We know that there are a couple of large slides, and, and some splash pad features being proposed. So, we have those exact blocks and footprints from the city, and have, have included those in there. The only difference between what the city provided and what we are showing here is that we've even, even more so have expanded the pool deck, is that was also a comment by the public, that there just needs to be additional space there within that fenced-in area. Just east of the pool space, there is a drop-off. If there are any large buses, that, there is an opportunity right there for them to drop kids off. drop kids off. And, and then just to the east of there, we are showing the water treatment plant being expanded. Again, that is a change from a few weeks ago. It was noted by staff that the, the footprint of that building would need to be greater than what we were originally showing. So, we believe that this is about an adequate amount of space. Just east of that, there's a smaller building there, and that's meant to be for maintenance, along with kind of a small enclosed yard for storing topsoil, egg lime, things like that. That yellow, or kind of, yeah, yellow off, off-white color there is enough space for a large semi to turn around and get out. So, if there are chemicals, any large deliveries for the park, that can all be accommodated sort of back-of-house to the, to the community space there. As we move further south, there is now a large parking lot and also designated drop-off locations for the existing ball fields. As you note, there are two of the smaller fields that have been removed, and one field has also been flipped. So, you have a four-field pinwheel on the north there. And then there's also a smaller 100-foot, 150-foot, either Little League or Miracle Field. It is proposed that that 150-foot field be synthetic turf. So, in the springtime, if you, if you have some, any wet conditions, if Lake Aspen is still there next year, you know, that could be an opportunity to practice infield. And then just to the east of that is, would be an all-inclusive play area. And then one common theme throughout all of the existing ball fields is that there would be accessible concrete pads, trail connections between all of the facilities, grandstands, spectator seating areas. There is also a new restroom concession building proposed in that north pinwheel. As is on the south, we have four new fields. So, there'd be one 350, 300-foot field, two 225-foot fields, and one 200-foot field. And then within the center of that would be another restroom concession building. As we work south there from those four new fields, again, this is just kind of a, a space for a variety of different activities. We're showing two full-court basketball courts, bocce ball courts, some horseshoe pits, a large playground, and then four volley, sand volleyball courts. Just south of that, that white building is a proposed hockey arena. So, the footprint of that right now accommodates kind of a common entryway space, one indoor hockey arena, and then potentially one outdoor arena. Should the city or the Hockey Association ever want to expand on this to include any other community center-type activities or an additional rink, for, you know, minimal cost, you could remove those sand volleyball courts and expand there to the north. We'll shift over to the west and then work our way back up towards the pool. But just to the west there, you have, you know, some more parking there to support that hockey arena feature. And then there's also stormwater management area on the very south there. And then on the west side of the main park road, you have a hammocking area. There's a fenced-in dog park. There's a large open space, and the size of that is large enough to accommodate a full-size soccer field. And then there is the relocated remote control track. And then just south of that would be a berm feature with some type of artistic sculptural element. And those sculptural elements, there are three of those kind of strategically spread out throughout that main central corridor. Just east of the existing pond that's out there, we are proposing a three-season picnic pavilion and potentially FEMA-rated storm shelter, should the city want to apply for FEMA grant. And then just to the east of that is kind of a tiered lawn seating with a raised platform there for that kind of outdoor performance space. Around the existing pond, there's a loop trail about five to six feet wide. It would be paved with some type of aggregate material. And then just off of that, there would be kind of these protrusions or sort of catwalks that go into that stormwater management area, and they would have some type of interactive educational component to them. When we met with the school district, they had noted that they would use the park and potentially use it for field trips, you know, if there, if, if it could support, you know, some of their curriculum. Another point that I wanted to mention is that as part of this plan, we have called out spots for wayfinding and directional signage. So, those would be at key locations to whether you're turning into the, the hockey arena, the baseball fields, the pool, and so on. But those would be located along that central spine there. I guess, you know, one other major point that, that I have is that that stormwater management area, we are proposing to kind of expand that and extend it to the north a little bit. And that's really kind of this common thread that weaves and ties all of the pieces together. So, you know, we, we really want that to be sort of this natural, kind of native connection between all of the features. So, that's a very quick rundown. There's a lot of, a lot of detail that I could get into. That's a, that's a pretty high-level overview. I'm happy to answer any questions. But, you know, tonight is really made, meant to be kind of an update of, this is where we're at, this is what we're proposing, and a time for you guys to ask any questions. And like I said, we'll be coming back in about a month to review funding opportunities as well as potential phasing.
Questions from the council?
Just a quick one. I believe at the last meeting you had covered this, but as a refresher, the parking, I believe, was a dramatic change. Can you refresh our memory what the current capacity is now and what this new plan would allow for?
Yes. So, today, I, I did a quick calculation based on our current air photo and, and actually drew out, if, if you were to park correctly out there, and everyone parked it, you know, and your stalls were nine feet, you know, and, and 20 feet in depth, you could fit approximately 350 cars. So, this plan has, wanted to say, 550? 600?
Yeah, with on-street.
On-street, so, yes. So, the, the on-street had about 100 stalls. So, there's a combination of 90-degree pull-in spaces and some parallel stalls along the main roadway. And then there are one, two, three, four, five designated parking lots as well. So, it should be a drastic improvement in, in traffic should flow much better and be a lot safer as well.
One thing that I see here is the, the hockey rink is all the way down on the, on the south end, and they're in the process of doing a lot of fundraising. I don't know when they're going to be ready, but they may be ready before all this other stuff is. And having that building all the south end with no access to it. Is this a movable or something that?
There, that's a good question.
If they, if they were ready to, if they were ready to move forward, obviously, the rest of this is going to cost a lot of money. I don't know, you know, where that's going to be or how long it's going to be to phase that all.
Yeah, that's a great question. And, and to be, you know, quite frank, you know, it's one that we still need to work through with the city, but my initial reaction to that is that you could take, basically where the parking lot ends today, you could grade in the roadway base, you know, what, within the alignment that we're showing here, and also, you know, put in some of the parking to support that hockey arena, and you could leave it as an aggregate base. You know, so you could basically extend the roadway, add some parking, add the utilities and the stormwater management to support that piece. And in theory, you could even do some minor grading on either side of that. You know, so that could be a phase one.
The main gist, I think, for the council and for the public is to try to provide a plan that we have some semblance of organization of where we're going. And that's what you are accomplishing, and I think doing a very good job of that. And I'd like you to get an electronic version of this so we can get it out on our website to get more and more eyes on it, more eyes on it, the better. I, I think it does what we want it to do, provides us with a comprehensive, organized plan to give us guidance on what, what we got to do. So, just as your question, Dave, Hockey Association comes to us tomorrow and says, "We have $6 million, and we want to build a hockey rink." Well, rather than just start throwing up walls, we have some form of a, of a plan, how we're going to make it work and how we're going to accomplish it. That's what you need in these situations, these park situations.
And Dave, that is a good question, and Park Board has talked about that extensively. And one thing that could happen from that is it could give us the impetus to get that second entrance done. You know, we kind of need a push on that because, of course, that's going to be quite expensive, but that might, that could very well be our push.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
All right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, our agenda under Parks and Recreation, we have a wage adjustment for Corey Larson, item B3 to $23.02 an hour. I can have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the wage adjustment for annual review for Corey Larson to $23.02 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B4 is to approve a contract with Dirt Works Incorporated for $48,221 to grade the park at Stone Ridge.
Correct.
We need to get the, the park graded, the site graded, and then the other improvements can follow, including the concrete walkway around it and the shelter restroom building.
I would make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Very good, second.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the dirt work upgrades to Stone Ridge Playground Park, call it. Any further discussion?
Tammy, you were okay with, you were okay with this, right?
Yep. I think it's a pretty good bid for the amount of work that they're doing in the time of year.
Definitely need to get some things done on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a quote for drainage issues at Sunrise Park out by the Golf Course Edition, I call it, or whatever, from First Rate for $13,213 to drain the playground into the underground drainage system to get the water away from everything. We have enough water flowing around out there, we don't need any more.
Yep.
Motion to second to approve the quote from First Rate for $13,213. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Public safety, police report, monthly inspection report, a fire report. We have item C3 we need to approve or, or discuss anyhow, a, to have a sergeant position in the police force. Brian? Joe?
Joe.
Excuse me.
Joe, we're police chief, was seeking for authority to advertise the sergeant position vacated after the promotion of Lieutenant Steffel on June 10th. Since I assumed the position of police chief on April 1st, I've been doing a lot of analysis to determine the necessity for the position, and I believe that I've clearly established that in some of the paperwork I provided to the council. We have three new officers out of the 13 that have less than three years, three months experience. Most of those officers, if not all three of them, will be night shift once they complete their training. And in order to provide appropriate hierarchy and leadership, I think it's important we have a supervisor on every night shift, and this will do that.
Done a good job of laying out the groundwork of the why. Now, it's up to the council, is there a motion to approve?
The posting would be internal. This, we aren't hiring an additional person, this would be a posting internal from the department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second to approve the sergeant position within the City of Brandon Police Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Appreciate it, Joe. We also have a annual review adjustment, wage adjustment for Jamie Steffel to $34.47 an hour. I can have a motion to approve that adjustment, wage adjustment?
So moved.
Motion to second to approve the wage adjustment for Jamie Steffel to $34.47 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tammy's going to give us an update, or Tammy and Joe, of a recent inquiry we had from the people out in the bluffs regarding traffic, and you guys have done some work on that and...
We have. Residents came last month and voiced some concerns, and since then, Chief and I sat down with them and talked with them about some of their concerns. We came up with some solutions as far as putting in a couple playground signs near the park there at Van Busker Park. We're going to take a look at what we can do with some crosswalks near that park, along with, we have talked to a couple landowners and the developer out there about putting in some sidewalks. And we had about 66 feet of sidewalk that we needed to put in, so Raleigh got on that right away, and that's in, along with updating some of the curb ramps out there. A couple other things that they brought up was some tree trimming, which we have tree trimming coming up. So, we'll take a look at some of those intersections and whatnot and address those concerns. And then they also had some stop and yield sign requests at some intersections. And the METCD kind of lays out different warrants for those intersections in order to put those stop and yield signs in. So, I'm working through some of that. We borrowed some traffic counters from the county. They're not meeting the ADT requirements, and so we'll take a look at some of the site distance requirements and see what we can do at those intersections. Anything to add?
Summed it up perfect. Very good, I appreciate the update, and I'm sure the people out in the bluffs appreciate your diligence in, in dealing with their concerns. Everything I've heard has been positive. Very good, thank you for your time. Next, we have to approve a contract with H Squared for social media consulting services. Any additional comments, Brian?
Nope.
$25,000?
Correct.
Still? Motion to approve?
I would make that motion.
Motion to second to approve the contract with H Squared for social media consulting services in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Any questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With the change in the position for Dennis Olson, moving to strictly economic development, we've set that wage at $25 an hour. I need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second to approve Dennis Olson wage at $25 an hour to perform economic development duties as we see fit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a first reading of ordinance 592, which is a supplement to the budget, total of $1,265,000, I think I saw.
Correct.
Paying for reconstruction of the core area, Rushmore Projects, in advance of where we were planning on paying for them.
Yeah, a lot of preliminary design and design work going on this year.
So, we have to supplement the budget to, to approve that, to get started on that. These funds will be reimbursed by the, when we do a, issue a bond to pay for all the project, then they'll reimburse the city for those, for those monies.
Correct.
With that said, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to second to approve the budget supplement in the amount of $1,265,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Motion carries, thank you. Streets, we have the work report, and we have a 2018 transit report. I guess I'd just quickly note that over 13,000 rides is Brandon City Transit provided in 2018, which to me seems like a very significant number. Thank you for the services there. Item number E3, we have a request for a block party on River Oak Avenue. Need a motion to approve that?
Yep, and I would, staff would recommend, since 101 West Mount Nash did not sign the application, that the, that the River Oak Avenue be blocked off south of 101 Mount Nash down to intersection of West River Oak Drive.
So maybe?
Second.
Motion of second to approve the block party request as delineated by Brian with the addresses as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have to approve some contracts with Geotech to perform soil board testings on a couple areas. First of all is the core area that we're, want to see what we're getting into in that whole area down there. They have a project, or a contract for $13,300 to perform some soil board testings down there. If I could have a motion?
Second.
Motion of second to approve contract with Geotech for core area soil testing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Same thing on the Redwood Sioux Boulevard area, we want to do some test board sites there to determine the soil content down low, down below. That one is just a few bores for $2,650. If I could have a motion to approve that one, with Geotech.
Second.
Motion of second to approve soil board testing of Redwood and Sioux Boulevard with Geotech in the amount of $2,650. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number E6, we have a phase one final design services from HDR for the core area reconstruction in the amount of $240,487. We need a motion to approve that contract.
This would be for bidding anticipated to be in February of 2020, and then if you notice up on the TV screen, that is the proposed area for phase one of the core reconstruction.
Motion to approve. Did you want? Motion, motion of second to approve a contract with HDR for the phase one final design services in the core area in the amount of $240,487. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Core area preliminary design contract with HDR, this is a big one, $763,000.
Yep.
Folks, this is a huge project.
That's for the preliminary design that they're already underway. Sayre and Associates have started the surveying a couple weeks ago.
Right.
So.
I will need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the contract with HDR for the core area preliminary design in the amount of $763,432. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, can I address one item real quick?
Yes, sir.
So on the phase one, I just want to back up to that map, if you will, it's on your, in your packet, and we've coordinated with city staff when we set the, our proposal up for the RFP, to answer the RFP. This area is indicative of that drainage basin that drains to the west and to the railroad tracks, and so it, it seemed natural to us to identify this area, and being that it's the furthest west, we work our way naturally to the east. Tammy and I had discussed the Dogwood section there that was added, just because it's, it's kind of on its own out there, it makes a lot of sense to add that to the phase one project. And so I just wanted to touch base with you real quick to identify this, this area and why we chose it and, and moving forward with that design. This is a large, large area, as we had indicated in our phasing. And so when we take a look at these, we want to make sure that we are getting the public involvement in place right away, making sure that we're addressing some of those public concerns, and as we move forward with the project, I'm not saying it can change a lot, but we want to make sure that we are taking a look at the constructability of these areas. As you well know, in the residential reconstruction projects, when we're looking at phasing and timing of the construction of the project, making sure that we're moving forward with the design and getting that project bid as soon as possible so that we can get our contractor on board and have a solid schedule is key on these projects moving forward. And so we'll stay in close contact with staff and make sure that the public involvement piece of that is, is being heard. And then with our preliminary design of the entire core area, that was something that we talked about again in our proposal that, that y'all had the opportunity to read, was making sure that our public involvement is staying on task, making sure that we're having everybody involved in those public meetings. We plan on having one in the end of September, which again is very aggressive. We did mail out the survey letter to all the adjacent property owners, and we've had a lot of really good feedback just in the contact card that we've requested from those property owners adjacent to these projects. We have a meeting scheduled for next week already, Tammy and, or tomorrow, actually, just to go over the groups that would like to be involved in our design meetings as we're moving forward. We want to have those.
I would just stress, Paul, that timing is, is so critical in these projects, and you just cannot fail on your timelines. You've got to hit those timelines, and it's just, it's just insurmountably important to us and the, and the public. This is a major, major project, as you well know, and as staff well knows, and so we really have to, we've put a lot of confidence and trust in, in you and your firm with a lot of money to back it up with, so I trust that you just hit these timelines and keep us updated. Any changes, anything that, because I, I just cannot remember the, the magnitude of this project happening in Brandon.
Right, and I was, that, yep. I thank you for that, Mayor, and I really, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and you and, and council and the staff, and we will outline that schedule and make sure that in our project communication plan, which we'll develop with staff, that we identify schedule as one of those items as we're moving forward, that as it needs to be updated, you will be the first to know, and the reasons why.
And I'm a real sticker on those bid deadlines. Hit those bid deadlines. You need to, to do those. Those are key to saving us a tremendous amount of money if you can hit those, like you, you say you will in the, in the laid-out documents. It's going to be a big project, folks.
Thank you. Again, we're looking forward to getting started.
Appreciate it. Water and sewer, we have to seek permission to advertise for bids for the Aspen Boulevard Force Main Project. Can I have a motion to allow us to seek bids on that project?
So the, the timeline on that would be to advertise in the paper on the 14th and the 21st. So we'd bid on the 28th, and then would bring it back to council for approval on the September 3rd meeting. So hopefully they could start by mid-September.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion of second to approve the, authorize the administration to advertise for bids for the Aspen Boulevard Force Main Project. I would just comment, remember, this is a, a non-budgeted expenditure mishap that our city incurred this past year. I was talking to Brian a little bit, you know, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, but there's a slight possibility of recouping some funds in this whole project from FEMA.
We'll certainly talk to FEMA representatives to see what, if any, we can get reimbursed for as the, the sewer line was damaged during the flooding this spring, so we'll certainly work with them to.
If you have some connections, now would be the time to utilize them, make the phone calls there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Christina, you have an update on the, our water billing?
Yes.
Progress or?
It's been a while since I've come with the dollar amount and the quote for it, and I just want to let you know that I am continually working on it. I've been going back and forth with our software company over these last few months, trying to keep them moving and coming up with a final design, which I think we're there now. There has been some back and forth and a little extra money than what we're planning, just some, some things we probably should have done in the past using the third-party billing companies, we're just making some corrections as we go along as well. And in the meantime, as we're getting our utility bills going, we are currently working on the emailing as well, so we hope to have everything up and running no later than January. I'm hoping before that, but we'll kind of set a timeline of January to get everything out and rolling.
Perfect, I appreciate that. Anytime you get multiple computer nerds in a room, it's gonna, it's gonna cause some issues, I, I get it. So keep plugging away.
Are people able to sign up for that online, or can they only sign up through the paper process?
Yeah, for the emailing, yep, we did send it out in the bills for them to just kind of update their information, as well as, are you interested in people's billing? They would have to either fill out that slip that we filled out. We've updated our forms since then as well, so as people are moving in and out, then we have that option on there as well, if they would like that option, but yeah.
If somebody asked me that got the form in the mail, I mean, is there any other way? Can they fax it? Can they email it? Can they?
They can, yeah, she's had some emails, some, just somebody emailing her the information, so that is an option. Yep.
Do you want to continue with this order of the agenda, Brian, or?
No, I, I, I think we could probably go into executive session and then work on the budget work session. After that, we do need an exec session.
Makes, makes sense to me to.
Yep, on potential litigation.
Counsel, I agree with that. We have two items of legal litigation-type issues to go into executive session for, if I can have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
At 7:02 PM, motion of second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go into executive session, thank you.